And Councilor Moore, Hamilton, Miller, and Grindel are present. So let's turn it right over to you.
Well, thank you. I think I sent out to Heather a post-draft of the timeline and a draft of the advertisement. And what I'd like to do, I'm Don Yarish from Eaton Peabody Consulting. I met a lot of you in Eaton Peabody Consulting group. And I'm a retired manager. I've been 38 years as manager. In the last 10, I've been doing this type of work.
Don, they're going to set you up with a mic here in a second.
Just to be sure the public can hear you.
And while you're doing that, I probably should have started. Councilor Grindel, I don't know if you wanted to set the stage in terms of the process, where we're at and what we're doing, just to get the public up to speed.
Sure.
Just in terms of Don's role.
We are looking, or we have contracted with Don to help us through this process, to go through the ads and to review resumes and things of that nature. And so we're here to just discuss that timeline of what, and then also to review the ad.
Thank you.
Don?
Thank you. I did the search five years ago, I think it was, for you at that time. And there are a couple of questions that the council needs to decide upon this evening so that we can start the search. If you look at the timeline, the draft I did for you, it starts with tonight's meeting and hopefully we can finalize the process in the ad. Once we do that, the rest of the timeline falls in place. If you approve the ad this evening, we could have it placed on the 24th. One of the questions I need to resolve with the council is what we've done in the past, we did it five years ago. We came down and we interviewed all your department heads. And this is individually, and asked them two questions. What are the issues facing Ellsworth in the next five years and what you're looking for in a new city manager? And their responses, it's confidential, but their responses will be a document that I put together. And I gave copies last time. I don't know if the board has seen those, but five years ago, it was the sheet and a half of responses. We also have what I call a public meeting. And these are optional to you if you want to do these, which we invited the public to come in and do the same thing. We asked the public, come into a meeting. I would run it and we'd ask two questions. What do you see the issues facing Ellsworth and what they're looking for in a new city manager? Once we do that, we put a document together that sends to the council and also it could be on your website so that people can see what everybody is thinking about for this position. So we need to decide that if you want to do those this year. Because I put in a date to do them and we need to talk about that. But we also need to decide what you want to advertise. And I'll go back to this. And if, once we do that, if we had the ad placed on the 24th, the deadline would be October 21st, about four weeks. What we do, all the ads come to us. We look at them, we respond to everyone who sends an ad in that we've got their ad. And then we put together a booklet, and I think I showed this to you all last time, this was Casco's. It's a booklet with all the resumes in it. And it also will have my recommendations on who I think you ought to consider to interview. It's your call, but I will at least give you a recommendation of the ones I think are important. Once we do that, we'll set up a date to meet with the council to review the resumes and decide on who you want to do for interviews. Once we do that, we'll set up a first round of interviews. That probably would be a couple of days depending on how many people you want to interview. Once we do the first round, then we'll meet after we do all the interviews and the council will decide. Most likely, you bring back two candidates depending on the quality and the number you get. It might be three, it might not be. Once you do that, we schedule a second round of interviews with the candidates. We will give you questions, proposed questions. Again, these are draft questions. If you want to add your own, you can do that, but we will help with some questions for the position. And then second round of interview, and if you look at November 16th through 19th, that's second round of interviews. And we have done, and we did here, the department heads get to interview the finalists. And what that is, department heads come in, they interview one finalist. Then we don't have them vote or anything like that. What we say is tell us what you, positives, negatives, anything. I'll take that information of both candidates. And then the council will interview, it says select board, and you can tell I've used this before, it should say council, would meet again. The public gathering is something that we've been doing the last six or seven years, bringing the two finalists, which finalists will be public, who they are. And we will bring them in and invite the public to come in. It's more of a meet and greet. It's not official questions, but it was an opportunity to allow the public to come in and meet the candidates. We did that last time we were here. And I don't think we had a whole lot of people, as I remember, but some people showed up.
One or two.
Yeah. And we now do them on the same night. We don't do it separate nights. We bring both candidates back the same night so public can come and meet both of them. They only have to come out one night. So we need to decide if you want to do that. Then council makes a decision. We, if you want, we offer to negotiate the contract with the new manager. And we can do that. And after that's done, we make the announcement. So this is, as you can see, if we start tonight, this has a manager at least hopefully named by the 1st of December. So if this doesn't work, we need to go over that and decide. But that gives you an idea of what the process is. If we can go back up to the top, the question of where do you want to advertise? I would recommend that you advertise in ICMA, which is the International City Managers Association. That will give you the exposure on a national basis. That's $450 for one month to do that. I would, we certainly put it on MMA job site. We can, we'll put it at Maine Job Bank, we'll put it on your website. Some communities have wanted to concentrate in the New England area and have wanted to put the ad in. The Massachusetts Association, similar to Maine Municipal, but it's Massachusetts, so you can concentrate there. And New Hampshire, those would be the two I, if you wanted to do it, I would concentrate on. And then it's more locally and you can emphasize that. So the first real question is where do you want to advertise? New Hampshire is like 250 for a month and Massachusetts is like $300 a month to do that for one, for an advertisement. So that's kind of the first question, where would you like to advertise? So I need some direction from you on that. I'll answer any questions about that, or you can ask me any questions any time about any of this.
Is there a New England association?
No, there isn't. There's not a New England Managers Association. It's each community, each state has their own association. ICMA, if managers are looking for jobs or considering, that's the premier one you really should advertise there. And you'll get applications from all over the country for the position.
So is ICMA is how much?
450.
450.
Yeah.
Maine Municipal is a free or is it a week?
Free.
Free should be.
Yeah.
And then the other two, New Hampshire and?
Yeah. And I, there, I would say around 400 to 450 combined for both of them if you wanted to do that.
450.
Yeah.
So $1,000 gets us nationally and those two local plus Maine Municipal.
Yes.
That's pretty cheap money.
But ICMA also covers New Hampshire and Massachusetts.
Yeah, but it may, maybe more specific to somebody else may see it more regionally too. How much luck are you going to pull anybody of any value from far away? It may be a... What do you see for results, seeing how you do this for a living?
Well, I will tell you, I suspect, oh, I'll give you some examples just so you'll know. Recently, I did Old Orchard Beach. We got 26 applicants. I think there were eight from Maine and five from New England and the rest were nationally. Casco, we got 31 applications and we got six from Maine and seven from New England. So that just gives you an idea.
And where did they advertise?
Where did they advertise? That was a question.
Oh, they advertised just nationally. Old Orchard Beach, Casco did nationally. Old Orchard Beach did ICMA plus New Hampshire and Massachusetts. You know, it depends on the community, depends on the size, what people are looking for.
The New Hampshire, Massachusetts part, is that let get to different people than the ICMA or a different group?
I, you, if someone's really looking, they're going to look at ICMA.
Okay.
If someone in New England says, I want to stay in New England, they may look at the Massachusetts and the New Hampshire website to try to stay in the regions.
So we may get somebody, that's what I thought in the back of my mind. You may get somebody more regional, better, but have a better chance of retaining.
Yeah.
I get some...
Yeah, someone wants to stay in New England, they're looking around. And if they see it on Massachusetts and New Hampshire, you may...
We did that. We did the carpetbagger thing with Guntie. He went out, he looked, he interviewed great, came in, and he was a piece of crap.
Okay.
So...
Moving on.
So anyway, so sometimes you have to be cautious. I don't think that, for what little money that is...
If you remember last time, one of your, the two finalists, the other finalist was from Massachusetts.
Massachusetts, right.
Right. So you did pick up someone from Massachusetts to come in.
I don't, I don't recall where, if we did New Hampshire and Massachusetts besides ICMA.
I didn't look. I don't. I can't tell.
For the $450, it's really pretty small money to save. You may pick up somebody that's qualified that you might not on the ICMA.
I think we should...
Get the dots out.
We're looking for a qualified person, period.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think Glenn wants to do this for another 20 years, so. You know, if we save a little bit of money, what do we gain? What do you know? It's advertising. Who knows?
Oh, I...
That's the same thing when you...
I have no issue.
No.
So we'll do Mass, New Hampshire, and ICMA. Is that the consensus?
And Maine.
And Maine. MMA's a given, yeah.
The free one, we like the free one.
Yeah, the free one. We'll do a lot of those.
And then we will post on our site, obviously.
Yes. Yeah. Okay. We'll, that's good. I can, we can move right along on that. I had, I picked a week in between, but the 5th through the 8th, I said, do you want to have another public meeting, invite the public or not? I mean, that's your call. And have department heads interviewed again. It's been five years. I don't know if things have changed. So...
I guess I, I'm not sure what the turnout will be, but I think it, and we probably have to discuss what it looks like in COVID era, but I think, I think it's important to at least offer the opportunity for the public to have some involvement and the department heads to be heard in the process. And so setting whatever that structure is to provide that, I think is a good thing for the community.
Are you, are you holding public meetings or not now?
We are now.
You are?
It's public right now.
Right. What we also do is the ad is to allow people to email to me from the public side their comments. So they don't have to be here. They can email to me and I'll take what they say and put it in the document. I think it's, my recommendation, I think it's a good, good process to include the public as much as you can. You may get a lot, you may not. I don't think we have any, but the first time we, it was upstairs, I remember here, and I don't think we had a whole lot, but at least they have the opportunity. So you want to do both of those? Does that consensus?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
All right. Let's take a minute and look at the ad. This was the ad that I did last time. I changed, no, I didn't change a whole lot in it. I'm going to have to update, I don't know if the population's changed or full-time staff. Probably the budget, I'll have to get some new numbers on. But if you like it, it worked last time. If you don't, if you want to add something, let me know and we'll do that also, so. The first part of the ad is just painting the picture where Ellsworth is. And this is for the national, the national search. People in Maine are going to know where Ellsworth is, but the first paragraph kind of paints a picture where you're located, talks a little bit about the community. And then it talks about, you know, some drawer is manager comes and has a spouse that wants to work and there's Bangor and there's Bar Harbor. So that's the picture. Second paragraph kind of talks more about the specifics of the community, how large it is, budgets, how it's run. And so then someone can get a picture there. Third paragraph kind of starts to talk about what you're looking for, what type of experience. And understand what's in there is a catch-all. If you've got someone that could do everything on this, that paragraph, you hire him tomorrow because you've got a good candidate. But it starts emphasizing what you want to look at. One of the other things that we talked about the other day when I was here, and we have to make sure it's the same, is that residency in Ellsworth is desired, but is negotiable. I just want to make sure we're okay with that. And then the last, the last paragraph just talks about what you're looking for in terms of an educational background. So I'll be quiet. Any, is it okay? Is it?
Tony had mentioned in the website, it's ellsworthmain.gov.
Okay.
Instead of...
That's okay. We can make that change.
Small thing, but the aligning, the, you have on the ad the 23rd, but you have on your timeline the 21st as a deadline, so.
Well, that was good.
And then a more substantive comment. It's just in terms of the residency, and I don't know if, this may cover it anyway, but just thinking in terms of it, it's negotiable really if somebody in the area is already established as a home and is selected. I'm not sure it's negotiable for somebody who is coming from outside of the area. We would want somebody from outside of the area to live in Ellsworth, wouldn't we? And so it's negotiable for some, but not for all.
We, well, anybody that you bring...
That's why it's negotiable. The paintbrush covers both.
It doesn't say that you would do it, it's just negotiable. So my thought, my thought on that is that if someone was coming from Massachusetts, that you would say to them in interviews, if you felt strongly, we want you to live in...
In Ellsworth.
In Ellsworth. If someone, you know, like Dave who lives in Bangor, who was a good candidate, a Brewer, you would say that's okay. I mean, I think you can narrow that down as you look at each candidate.
As the discussions go, to be frank with them, if it's from out of state and then it's getting the arrow down to the point, tell them they'd like to live in town.
So is this okay? And will the change in the, if I could get the new numbers from the budget, you could email those to me? Population, I didn't check what the census is now, but if you have a number you use and the rest of the numbers. It's important that we put in there that there's a wastewater department and a water department so people understand. A lot of municipalities don't have that, so we wanted to put that in there. Okay, so that's good. We're moving along. You know where we're going to advertise. If I didn't mention this earlier, when you get your notebooks, I will have done a very preliminary background or discussion with the candidates I recommend. So I will not recommend anybody that I haven't talked to, haven't done a little research on. So that will be done for anyone that I recommend. Just, I won't do it for everybody, but I'll do it for, for those that I recommend. And so then, you know, the week of the 28th through the 29th, the sooner we can pick a date when we're going to do that, the better off, because then I know that's what we're going to do. Let me tell you about the notebooks. How we do the notebooks, they're overnighted, Federal Express or UPS to the chair. They'll come to your house or wherever you want them and you can deliver them to the rest of the, rest of the council.
And so that's probably, we'll change that to have them go to Councilor Grindel.
Oh, that's fine.
Because she's managing the process.
Sorry, yes, no, you're right. I can do that.
Depending on...
And it just makes it a little more confidential, not saying anybody would talk, but by doing that, then we know they're going to you and then you can get them to...
Okay.
So a question about the, this part of the timeline in terms of that first round of interviews?
Yes.
I would suggest that we bump that back. That's the week of elections, November 3rd. And also then, there will be new counselors at that point during the election. And it's usually the week after? Is that the...
So the Friday, there's a special meeting to accept the results. That Monday is the organizational meeting.
On the 9th?
Yep.
So if we could look at the week of the 9th to do the first round...
Yeah, yeah. No, that's not a problem. I didn't think of that, but...
And then there's a holiday that week as well.
That would make more sense.
And can I throw another wrench into it? The meeting with the council the week before, the 28th to the 29th, this room and the one upstairs, I think they will have started changing it out for elections, having the voting booths and such in here.
What day are we?
It is Wednesday and Thursday.
They'll start, he'll start with Friday. So if that helps you at all, I mean, we won't be redesigning the rooms until that Friday.
Oh, okay. So we're good either way then? All right.
So if we, if we say okay, then we'll do the first round of interviews. If you're going to have a meeting on the 9th, I heard you say?
Is that Friday?
Monday, the 9th, November?
It's at like 10:00 in the morning, so.
Well, you'll know who won the election on the 3rd. I'm just thinking this through, right? Hopefully.
But in there, the results are accepted that Friday at 8:00 a.m. So we would have a meeting Friday morning at 8:00 a.m. to accept those results. So if that works in your schedule.
So if we had, how about, you're going to need two days, right?
Depends on how many you want to interview, but I would say yes. It may be only, the other thing I said the other day, and I'll repeat, is we haven't been seeing, we've seen quantities, but we haven't seen the quality in applications that we've seen in the past. So if, if you get, if you get six good candidates, that would be outstanding today. I'm just being honest with all of you. We're just not seeing it out there.
Would it, would it...
Does that seem confidential?
Would it make sense, if we, if we're looking at that, the 10th, 11th, 12th in that timeframe for those first round, would it, might it make sense to do those interviews via a Zoom? And then that way, if we keep the timeline, the candidates we select will only have to travel once versus trying to travel back-to-back weeks?
I think the first round of interviews, if someone is, I would give them the option if they want to come or not. That's, it's under, it's their decision.
Okay.
If it's from out of state or somewhere, we'll do Zoom or we'll do whatever. So I would leave that up to the, my druthers, and I think from yours, would be druther to have a candidate here face-to-face to interview. It's a lot better and it just feels better. So I would give the option to do that.
Doing a meeting on Zoom is confusing enough. Trying to do an interview on Zoom, ouch.
I would do Skype. I wouldn't do Zoom. I would do Skype's easier because it's everybody instead of each person. So we can, we can work that out, I'm sure.
I've never done Skype, so I can't speak to it.
Well, we just did interviews in Casco and we did a Skype meeting. You must have someplace, yeah, you could set it up here with the, with the council setting here and the camera and everything, and you'll see everything right up there. It's a lot better than the Zooms that are each individual, I would just say. We can work that out. I'm just trying to figure out, so new counselors come in on the 6th. Can I ask, do you know you're going to have new counselors or not? I mean, is it...
Definitely one.
You'll have one new?
Correct.
Definitely one. And who else is up that's running? So there could be two, nothing, okay.
No, could be two. That's why, that's why Councilor Grindel is managing this process.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Yeah, I think, I think we're thinking, hopefully one.
I'll stay out of the politics in Ellsworth and continue on. Okay. So if we do, if you know on the 6th, does the 11th and 12th, the 11th's a holiday, 9th, you've got a meeting, did I hear you say?
That's, yeah, that's the swearing in of the council. That's the organizational meeting at 10:00 a.m. by charter. Maybe you can change it if you needed it at a different time.
I just, you, you need to tell me what would work the week of the 9th for some interviews. The 10th's a holiday. We're either looking at the 9th, the 11th, or the 12th, I think.
The 11th's a holiday.
11th is a holiday.
Oh, sorry. The 9th, 10th, or 12th, sorry.
Can we do the 10th and 12th?
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned. It's up to you.
Would it be better to do it back-to-back? And if so, would the 13th work? 12th and 13th?
That's okay. I'll come on, I try to avoid Fridays, but it's okay, but...
I love Fridays.
Yeah. If you want to, if you want to say the 12th and the 13th, that would work. Okay.
Good.
Oh, jeez. Friday, the 13th.
Yeah, okay. So what that means, you don't want to have your second meeting Thanksgiving weekend, week. So you'd be looking of moving the second interviews to the week of the, November 30th through December... thirtieth through December fourth. And I'll redo this and send it out so you don't. Public gathering, if we've still got the COVID, that doesn't work. It just doesn't have people coming in to meet a candidate. I just don't think that works. Having department heads interview the finalists, I think is important and your, your comments about having department heads at least have an opportunity. Let me take a step back. Department heads I'll interview individually. Any person who works for the town, who wants, the city, excuse me, who wants to send me some comments, email, I'll take those also. So it's really broad, let it, you know, let, let the employees, let us know what they're thinking. So we moved the second, your interview and the department heads to one day from November third to the fourth. I'm open to what that is. And maybe, we don't have to decide on that specifically tonight, but that would be the timeframe if you all agree for that, for that week. Any, anybody, is that okay? Okay. And so then after the, whatever night you meet with them, you decide who you want to offer the job to. If you want us to negotiate, I need to know that. If you want somebody else to negotiate, but I think I did it last time for you, as I remember. And then the, so would, this would go to that next week.
Seventh through the eleventh?
So would be the week of the seventh through the eighth, the December, seventh through the eighth, excuse me, seventh through the eleventh. And then you could actually name somebody maybe December fourteenth or through the, week of the fourteenth. When the person starts, it's gonna depend upon where they're working, how much time they have to give. As I said last time, I think anybody that's working is gonna have to give thirty days, if not forty-five, so I think you're looking sometime in February. And if someone has to move here, it's... Does that work for the council? Those dates and everything? A couple other informations you'd know, I was talking to Maine Municipal, Waterville had seventy applications. So I don't know, I said how many were qualified and Dave Barrett didn't tell me, but I don't think a whole lot were, were qualified, so. So we'll see, we'll see. And a lot of people out of work, a lot of people think they can be a manager, I will tell you that. We get a lot of applications that aren't real ones we want to look at. That's all I have. If you folks have anything else, I'm going to sign contract, you gonna do that tonight or you?
Yes, we are gonna.
Okay.
That's the plan.
I hope so.
So I, I, if you don't mind, I do get a comment, and I'm just wondering if you could just share a little bit about your background, somebody was asking about.
Yeah, I'm retired, I'm from Bangor, born and raised there, went to University of Maine, got a degree in public management. I had thirty-eight years in municipal government. I had jobs as the tax assessor in Rockland and then I was an assistant in Brunswick, assistant manager in Auburn. Gorham, I was manager for ten years in Gorham. Then I got the job in Brunswick and I was there twenty years as the manager in Gorham. I retired in two thousand and nine. I've been working for Eaton Peabody Consulting Group for the last almost ten years, eleven years now, doing exactly what we're doing here. I do, we've done over forty-five searches from managers to police chiefs to finance directors, mostly managers. Also, I do interim work. I've been interim in nine communities. Right now I'm interim in Casco, I've been interim in Khanquid, I've been interim in South Portland, I've been interim in Wyndham, and so I do that work also. And, but mainly doing the manager search process. And I was president of the International City Managers Association, the National Association in nineteen ninety-eight. I have connections throughout the country. So one of the things that I bring to this is when I get resumes from people outside of Maine and I know people I could call and talk about these candidates to get input, so I do, just so everyone knows, I do a lot of work, I do a lot of training with communities. Bangor's hired me three times to come and do workshops with the council and the department heads on how we all work together. I've done that in a number of communities. I'm doing a session with Maine Municipal Association on the eighteenth on roles and responsibilities of elected officials and managers. We do that. I've done that last six years, so.
Great.
As I said to the committee, I'm a municipal junkie, I love it. When I go on vacation, I look at the sewer drains and the sidewalks. Wife wants to know what I'm doing, so anyway.
All right, well, thank you. And then the, for the second part of the question, we will be taking up the contract during the meeting, so all the details will be available at that time.
One other joke, I think I told everyone the other day, but at these public meetings, just to make it clear, I run the meeting, you folks know, I control it. I make it clear, we're going forward, we're not going backwards, we're not here to say anything bad about people, we want to do it, and so it's worked out well. But I think I told the story in Rockland, I ran it, it was contentious, we had seventy or eighty people coming in, it's been a long two hours and the final person, a fisherman got up and came to the mic and I said, "Well, what are you looking for, for a town manager?" And he said, "I want you to hire the cheapest bastard you can to keep my taxes down." So I don't, and I, whatever he wants tells me, I say as nicely I can, but I put it in the document, so that's my story for tonight. Anything else?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with all of you and I'll redo the timeline. I'll, I'll send it to you, I'll redo the ad once I got those and we'll start advertising right away. The other thing I'll do is once a week after we've run the ad, I will send you an email on how many resumes we've gotten. I will say how many from Maine, how many from New England and the rest of the country. And don't get discouraged if the first two weeks you don't get very many, because it's like anything else, people wait to the end before they send it in and we get a lot at the end of the time, so. Thank you all.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Had a pleasure working with you. Didn't think it was gonna be so soon again.
Yeah, well, I've done, was Cassett twice, I've done Poland twice, and so, you know, the life of a manager today is five years, four to five years, so you don't find many staying longer than that, so. I guess it's job security for me, I'm retired, so. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Good luck with your meeting.
So Jason, we'll, we'll stop now and then go live back when the, at seven.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Oh, do we need to motion?
It's a special.
Oh, yes, a special. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So I can.
I'm in favor. We are adjourned.
You don't even take as long as you want, because we got Glenn.